Six thirty, we'll call a meeting to order. Certified compliance with the open meeting slots?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Cameron.
Here.
Councilmember Menke.
Here.
Councilmember Raisler.
Here.
Councilmember Weisemack.
Here.
Councilmember Weisamp.
Here.
What a person.
Next, we'll have the, uh...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Somebody like to make a motion to adopt the agenda? Motion second to adopt the agenda? Those say no, it's adopted. Next, move on to public comments. If there's anybody from the public that would like to speak, here's your opportunity. Whether it's an issue on the item, uh, or an item on the agenda or not, please identify yourself for the record. During none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, we have the approval of the Rego City Council minute, that's, uh, meeting minutes from the January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. Um, approved the budget comparison report for January twenty-twenty-five. Uh, approved bartender license for Victoria J. Roberts-Rydell at Spot Bar and approved the picnic license for the Pepin County Tavern League mini putt-putt event on March first, twenty-twenty-five. Everything's fine. Somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's great to... Next, we move on to the, um, uh, business, the mayor's report on administration. Now, the long-term planning committee of the Duran Library, uh, which both me and the city administrator, Sir Ron, did meet on Monday. Um, just to give you a couple of updates, uh, of what's going on, they are in the process of, um, approving a new mission statement. Uh, it's actually quite short, I can read it to you. It went through the committee the other night and we'll be going to the, the full, um, library board. The mission of the Duran Public Library is to be an inviting community space that provides free and equitable access to a broad range of materials and services to people of all ages and backgrounds, an effort to remember the past and connect with the present and educate for the future. What it is, and then they also have a bunch of, they have a bunch of other information that they're gonna be putting, like, on their website and Facebook page that they're talking about doing. The other thing that the, um, they're gonna be doing is a, um, a survey, and this will be coming out in March. Uh, it's a pretty simple survey, it shouldn't take too long for people to take, but it'll be available at the, um, library, it'll be available online, it'll be available here at City Hall, just to get an idea of what people are using the library for, um, uh, you know, how often they use the library and so on and so forth. But this will be coming up, and we've said that we will help, um, promote that. So that was the major things that came from the, um, library, uh, to start with the survey, get the mission statement in place, and then obviously we talk about the future, uh, of the library. Um, we're moving forward, um, I don't know if Matt was gonna mention this about that, with the signage at the pool for the donors. Uh, we do have a new company that we're working with, um, and things are, are moving along. Uh, I think we have some proofreading to do, I believe Tracy and Matt have been through it, but we're trying to get as many, if anybody else could proofread it, we're gonna go through all the names that need to be on there, make sure they're correct and, and so on and so forth, but obviously, uh, we wanna have, uh, a number of eyeballs on those before it goes to the final, uh, version that, to the sign company to make sure everybody's on there, that everything is spelled correctly. Uh, we did have the, uh, the pool group basically say, here's your date, you need to give us your finalist at this point, um, and, uh, and so we are moving forward with that, um, with the hope of having this all together, of course, um, uh, with, uh, with the opening of the pool, again, sometime in June, if everything goes, uh, according to, to plan. Um, we did have an economic development, uh, committee meeting, uh, prior to, to this meeting, uh, we started to talk about, uh, a number of things, uh, it was, uh, things that are moving forward, things that have come in front of this group, um, and so you're gonna be hearing about these different things, um, as we go along. Uh, we'll be planning, uh, at the next meeting to have everybody come and, and, and let's set up a economic development planning session to talk about the future of economic development, the tourism and those types of things in the city, and we're gonna do that at the next meeting, the next full council meeting, to set up a time that works best for as many people and trying to get the, um, public, uh, also involved. Uh, also, there's been brought to the, uh, our attention about a few housing issues in town, um, that, just say, efforts to deal with those are moving forward, uh, using a number of different fronts to try to accomplish, uh, that we, we have some places in town that are, are battling the ordinances that we have to, to about housing, but again, we're trying to make sure that we can, uh, work with those folks and get those improvements, uh, made. Also, uh, it looks like I finally have somebody to sit on, I know we had, uh, had a, a passing, um, and on the Board of Appeals, we still have a couple of the city committees open, now we'll look at those, I'll look at all those committees and bring them back after the election or as we go into the election, but I thought it was important to make sure we have a full Board of Appeals, um, and I did speak to somebody and it sounds like she would be taking the position, um, uh, and I, I will be bringing that back to the full council at the next meeting for approval, for appointment to the, um, uh, appointment to the, uh, the Board of Appeals. That's all I've got, any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to administrator's report. Just for the rest, I was like, oh my god.
Oh boy.
That's a handle. Carlson. It took me how many months to do it? It took me how many months?
Yeah, pretty good. So, uh, memo's in your packet, um, just brief notes, the staff and I attended the ribbon cutting, the River Grace that's opened up down the street, um, that was held on January thirtieth. The big thanks to Dig for organizing that event, there's not a chamber in the community, so, um, they asked me if I had resources or if we did that, and, and we didn't, so Dig took it upon themselves to take care of that open house and that ribbon cutting, so we went and did that. Um, I did meet with a staff member of US Congressman Derek Van Orden's office to discuss city needs and concerns, um, had some good information shared there, they do have some, I was made aware that there's some discretionary funding that our US senators, um, and congressmen have access to, and, uh, he encouraged us to potentially, um, use the application process moving forward to, uh, maybe assist with the Madison Street project, I mentioned that. I pointed down the wall, here's the, here's the map of the project we're doing. So Matt and I have talked about that and, and we, um, are keeping our eyes open for the application process for that, um, there's, there's no guarantee and it's to their discretion, but they have to, to, you know, the other legislatures for distribution of funds. Um, Madison Street Farmers Market planning continues, I mentioned this at our Economic Development Committee meeting earlier, um, the application period, I'm hoping to, um, potentially open up next week, if not next week, it'll be by the end of the month, once I get all the documentation put together for that, so there's, uh, some excitement, um, around the farmers market coming up, so, that's what I have.
Any questions for the city administrator? If not, uh, we'll have discussion regarding implementing the room tax ordinance, uh, information was included, and she'll, uh, explain where we're at with it.
Yeah, of course. So at last, uh, council meeting, the council agreed that a room tax ordinance should be pursued, so I reached out to, um, the city attorney, John Bailing, and he sent back a draft copy, which is in your packet, uh, and again, I memoed, uh, the ordinance provides for the following, it's an eight percent tax on all sales of rooms, uh, as they're, as they're used, taxes are to be collected quarterly, so there's a, uh, administrative end of things where we send out basically a statement saying, send us what your gross receipts are, and then the tax is that. Um, there's a permit application required by the place of business, it's a one-time permit fee of fifty dollars. Uh, they, um, there's a forfeiture for non-payment if, uh, that setup of tax payments are not made, so there's a provision that if they don't make their tax payments to us, then there's, there's some repercussions for that. Um, and then a tourism commission's created with four members, um, including the city administrator, a city council member, a committee member, and, um, one member of the hotel industry, and then they would have the oversight of spending seventy percent of the gross revenues to tourism efforts for the city. Thirty percent remains, um, in the general fund for general expenses and such that the city can use. So, um, mayor had asked for this to be on the agenda just more or less as a review for you, uh, to take a look at, have some time to, to read through it, um, no action to be taken tonight if I understood your purpose correctly, and then, um, putting it on the agenda for next, the next meeting for potential approval at that time. So if you have questions or need further information, please let me know that and I can get those answered for you, um, and then hopefully next, uh, you know, at the end of February, we can have the, um, ordinance passed and then have it implemented. I would suggest, um, April first, because that would be the start of second quarter, instead of doing it like in the middle of the quarter, so, that's that.
Any questions concerning the, uh, room tax ordinance?
Is it pretty typical, the eight percent? Why not six? I'm just asking.
Well, you can, you can set it any, any, at any amount you want, eight percent is the maximum that the state says, so, um, we added eight to it just because that's the maximum and why not, but you certainly have the option of adding, of making it whatever you'd like. If you think eight is too much, you can do it at five, you can do it at six, you can do it at three. Yeah, good question.
Thank you.
And the other reason, uh, also to, that the next meeting is beyond the fact to give the council the opportunity to read through everything and, and make sure we feel comfortable with it, is to make sure the public has the opportunity, and then, of course, we would have it on the agenda at the next meeting. Haven't decided, might do it just as a public hearing, it doesn't, you know, just to, to make sure people understanding that we're, we're adding in the ordinance, and, and if people have questions or reasoning behind it, although the people that actually be paying this are mostly people from out of town, uh, that's the other thing as far as, as far as that goes, so. But anyway, so that, uh, gives everybody the opportunity to look at everything over and review all the information, and will be on the agenda next, um, time. Okay.
That's all you have?
That was it?
Yeah.
Okay, public safety, Chief Ridgeway?
Uh, yeah, I just have a few things here, um, Officer Brandon has been working hard, uh, kind of promoting internet safety, uh, over the past week, he's put out a few posts on our Facebook account, um, and then he went into the fifth grade class and taught a class on internet safety to those kids, so, I thank Brandon for kind of pushing that internet safety for parents, um, to kind of keep, uh, aware of what their kids are doing with the internet, so. Um, I just got back from the chief's conference, um, at the conference, um, went to different sessions, um, some social media, building your brand, uh, training, some leadership training, um, a lot of legal updates, and then today we finished up with, uh, cryptocurrency investigations, uh, so that was, uh, a lot of technology in the cryptocurrency world that, so, uh, it's normally a three-day class and they, uh, gave us just a couple hours on it, and then they said, alright, now you guys are all experts. Sure. You call DCI. So, uh, Sergeant Shellhorn and I are planning, um, TASER training with our department on February nineteenth, uh, here in the building, uh, during that, uh, training, we're gonna be doing some scenarios, we have both this room and the community center reserved, and we'll probably put some signs up and shut down this building so nobody walks in on any scenarios, but we'll, we'll have the building that afternoon, the nineteenth, so. Uh, that's all I have. Oh, I guess I do have one other thing. On the next agenda item, uh, whoever makes that motion, could you make it contingent on our organizational meeting? We're meeting with the Tavern League and, uh, the bar owners on the twenty-fourth of February, so, that would have to be just contingent on that meeting.
Any questions, uh, for the police department? Hearing none, we'll move on to discussion, possible action regarding the application for the open containers for the Pepin County Tavern League for the mini putt event coming up on March first, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, but as far as everything else, it's pretty much in orders, it's been in the past?
Yep. Mm-hmm. Yeah, uh, we haven't had the organizational meeting, but I looked at the permit, everything was, uh, in line with the permit, um, so, it'll be an interesting discussion, but I don't know what the plans are with the Rooster Tail, go figure out what all they're using for establishments.
We're still, we're still debating, we, we looked at a couple other options, uh, we also thought about just using eight holes and maybe doing ten teams per, so, it's up in the area, but we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
So no other questions, would somebody like to make the motion?
Make a motion, we approve the, uh, application for the, uh, Pepin County Tavern League mini putt, putt event, um, with the successful agreement or whatever the wording would be for the organizational meeting with the police department.
Second. We have a motion in second to approve the application, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
Alls赞成.
Motion's agreed to. Next, we have, uh, fire department, and this would be, are you deputy or assistant chief?
Assistant chief.
Assistant chief, uh, Larry Plummer, uh, for the fire department.
Feeling in for Jamie tonight, um, we're currently hosting a fire two class at our station, so he's there teaching tonight with a few other of our fire guys, so, just gonna kind of go over the January twenty-five monthly report. Um, we held our normal monthly meeting on January twenty-seventh, with our annual meeting with voting of the officers, and nothing changed there at all. Um, on January twelfth, we had our officer meeting, and during that, we did a interview, will, with, um, Gil Nunez, which we hired him on to make nine new firefighters over the last few months, um, in the month of January, we had eleven calls listed below. Um, with the nine new guys, we had six active members move to senior members, so we did a little bit of shuffling around there, making room for, for everybody, um, so we currently have a full roster of thirty-six, um, active members and, uh, nine senior members now. Um, and obviously, we had Brady, our fire inspector, and then we had one guy take a six-month leave of absence, so we have forty-seven personnel on our fire department right now, leave it, which is, uh, the most we've had ever. Um, Monday night, we had a SAR, uh, training with Pepin County and Buffalo County, and that was put on by Sawyer County, correct Matt? Um, so the SAR is just, uh, search and rescue, so we're pretty much trying to pre-plan for anything that would come up in the Tiffany Bottoms, so we have, have it pretty much nailed out with everything we need to, to do down there for pre-planning. Um, looking through the calls, we did actually have the ladder truck out once in the month of January, um, just to pump with on a structured fire, and I'm sure everybody's seen it down here this month, um, whether it was in person or with Brian's, uh, video, so that was the downtown there at the Rooster Tail, it was the first time the ladder got out of the cradle on an actual fire, so, um, we had a monthly training at our meeting, upcoming event, uh, our fundraiser in May, so, you'll see the fire guys out and about getting donations, but otherwise, that's, that's about it.
Any questions for the fire department? Hearing none, uh, move on to ambulance, Director Biggel?
In January, we had thirty-seven calls, three of those calls were transfers, which are listed below, so it was kind of a busy month. Um, our training, we had, uh, APS, Adult Protection Service speaker come in and just kind of guide us on how to make those, um, cases or claims that if we think somebody should be double-checked on after we leave the situation or the living conditions. Um, on Thursday, February twentieth, we, as an ambulance service, are gonna be doing some blood pressure checks at the basketball game to help spread awareness for heart health. And that's about all I have.
Any, uh, questions for the ambulance?
Thank you.
Okay, move on, um, I don't see any rest tonight, so, uh, Director Public Works and Utilities, uh...
Yes, uh, it's been a busy couple weeks, so, we got an issue with our water tower, uh, we're going through, uh, quite double the amount of water that we normally do, uh, we fixed a service leak on Goodrich Street last Wednesday that we found, uh, but everything went good with that, we're up on, uh, the dead end of Off Street today, uh, fixing a coupler that we found that was leaking, um, so we'll see what our water usage is doing over the next couple days, I don't think our leak that we found today is gonna amount to the amount of water that we're losing, but, uh, one leak masks another leak, which masks another leak, so, we'll be out, uh, keeping an eye on that, so if anybody sees any abnormal water where water shouldn't be when it's, uh, this cold outside, do not be afraid to give me a call. Um, working on the water filter project, uh, we got a meeting next week to kind of foresee that project on where the bidding documents are gonna be, when we're gonna take it all for bid versus when the closing of the loan has to be versus when, uh, the PSC water rate case may or may not be finalized, so, uh, kind of working out on the timing of all of that, uh, with Cedar next week. Uh, the application has been filed with the PSC, uh, we got, they have accepted the application, today we got a notice to proceed, um, so I believe we're in the forty-five day review window where they'll come back to us with any comments, questions, or concerns, uh, so that should get us into March when we know that. Uh, Seventh Avenue bids are due tomorrow morning at ten AM, so a bid opening tomorrow for Seventh Avenue, uh, it's virtually online, uh, through Cedar Corp, ten o'clock tomorrow morning, so we'll know where Seventh Avenue will stay after that. Uh, Madison Street, we sat down with Cedar Corp, uh, we fine-tuned the Madison Street project, took out some things that we thought we could take out, uh, and got a new cost estimate, uh, around four million, and we will be, we have, just submitted that to Tracy and she forwarded out to Ellers, so over the next month or so, they will be, uh, we will be working up a funding plan for that project, hopefully, um, March, April, end of March, beginning of April, we'll have Ellers in to kind of talk about how we may or may not be able to fund that project.
How much was cut out?
Uh, we cut out, basically the only thing that we could really cut out was, uh, we just eliminated a bunch of double storm inlets that, you know, around, on our own intersections that could handle the flow, um, we eliminated some work on the storm tunnel, we were gonna just basically cap the outside of the concrete and we were gonna spray the inside, we took the inside, uh, lining out, and we're just gonna do the cap around the outside, eliminated putting the manhole up here on Main Streets, um, just kind of some of those alternate-type stuff that we were gonna do to, to most of the storm water. There's not a lot we can cut on water, there's not much we can cut on sewer, we can't really cut on the general unless we're really eliminate sidewalk, or we're gonna, you know, eliminate rock, or we're gonna put two inches asphalt instead of four inches, so there's not a lot to cut, you know, those projects are pretty bare bones as it is.
So how much money was, do you suspect you were able to cut? Is what you're hoping for?
Yeah, we probably only cut about a hundred thousand dollars out of the project. So we used, uh, the numbers from the bid in twenty-twenty-three, um, and then brushed them up with some bids that went out here in the fall of twenty-twenty-four, so we should be close, um, and put a little bit of contingency, a little extra contingency in to get it up to around that four million, so that, we're rather planning for four million than coming at three-six than the plan for three-six and it comes at four, so, uh, that's, that's where that's at right now.
And the grand, uh, that's what, about nine hundred thousand?
Yeah, eight hundred and seventy.
Eight hundred and seventy.
So Ellers will kind of do work their magic with the numbers and see, bring it back to see what we may or may not be able to do with that. Uh, applications for, uh, lifeguards will be in the paper tomorrow, they've been out on our website, they're due March sixth, I believe, uh, Gregory's been doing some recruiting, sounds like he's got a fair amount of, uh, of individuals that are interested in being lifeguarded and bathhouse attendant, so we'll see how, uh, how that plays out by, by March sixth. Uh, the pool, next meeting, you will see a change order, uh, we're cleaning up, uh, we got just a bunch of various things, some stuff left over from the state review for moving a storm sewer, uh, masonry labor for moving the, uh, toilets, there's a lot more work with block around there than I forgot to add that into that original quote, uh, we had to add some more trench drains in the lobby and the bathrooms to make sure our slopes worked out properly, so you'll see a change order next month for probably about fifteen thousand dollars, uh, which has been expected, uh, over the last couple months. Uh, we have about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar contingency in that project and we'll be at about fifty, so we've still got roughly ninety thousand of contingency left, hopefully we can get the donor walls and stuff in with that contingency as well, um, and down, moving forward, the only thing I got left really is the catwalk that we have to put in, which should be a few thousand bucks unless something pops up outside the building, but pretty much, uh, everything now we can foresee, so that should be it with the change orders. Uh, as far as keeping on the pool note, uh, electrical's been going in the last couple weeks, they started putting ceiling in, in the admin room and in the hallway, um, so, signed off on the specs for some of the gates and everything, signed off on the specs for the, uh, lockers, and picked out colors for lockers and the canopies, uh, that are going in and the shade structures, so we're moving along as best we can for below subdual weather. Other than that, unless you have any questions, it's, uh, just the next item on the docket.
Still thinking we're on target for what we're planning for opening?
As long as we can get into that pool in April first, I'm, I'm positive, so, it just depends on what Mother Nature's gonna do here for the month of March.
The water tower deal, assuming, obviously, it's been cold and lack of snow, from the curb stop bin, a lot of properties might have a crack or something there, would that affect the flow and how, how, how bad is it as far as the water tower, like, if, if you don't find a major loss in the next two weeks, what's gonna transfer?
We're just gonna keep moving water.
So it's not in a, uh, an amount where do we have to worry about?
No, it's not an amount where property damage is gonna acquire, it's not an amount where, like, you know, mudslides are gonna acquire, you know, we're losing about fifty thousand gallons a day, so, um, that could just be a, could be a busted inch and a half service somewhere in, you know, out in the curb line or a- anywhere. With our sandy soils, um, hard for people to believe, but the sand just absorbs a, a lot of that, so a lot of these smaller type leaks don't surface. In, in a town like Duran, we have, so a fifty thousand gallon leak in a town that has fifty PSI operating pressure is probably a main break, right? We have high operating pressures, you know, seventy-five and ninety-five, mostly up on the high side, it's close to ninety, ninety-five, so that just basically means a one inch to an inch and a half service line can leak, you know, sixty, seventy thousand gallons a day if it's, if it's running water.
And the only way you're gonna find it is that, if it comes to the surface?
Uh, not, no, not the only way, so we have, uh, there's a company, uh, Water Conservation Services out of the cities that comes to town and we find that using, uh, using equipment, listening devices, so we'll run around, we'll check fire hydrants, we'll, uh, put a device on a fire hydrant, and as water's leaking, water, if water velocity is moving through water mains, it'll create a chatter in the pipe, and we can listen to that chatter, we can listen through that frequency, creates like a high, a high pitch, like, for example, if you went and turned your bathtub faucet on full board and went down into your basement and put a screwdriver on your pipe, you'll hear the water flowing through the pipe, it creates, it creates a sound, it creates a chatter.
So can you actually...
We listen to that, and then when we get close, based on fire hydrants, we have another system called coalescing that we can put from one fire hydrant to another fire hydrant, it's almost like finding a, uh, uh, underground electrical line that's busted, we'll send a signal to each way and then it'll show us where that signal's interrupted, so that's how we find, get a little bit more fine-tuned, so. But, when you have multiple leaks in one area, so like you have a service leak on the corner of Goodrich and Prizel, and then two blocks away you have another leak like we did here, they can mask each other, 'cause you can hear them leaks from three, four hydrants away, so, um, we fix one, monitor the tower for a couple days, come back, find the other one, monitor the tower for a couple days, and then we might have to come back next week and fine-tune some more. Where it gets difficult for us is when you have large stretches, um, that have no hydrants and no valves, so if anyone's familiar with Oakwood Drive area, for example, we have a hydrant right in front of Government Center, we don't have another fire hydrant or another valve, they go up the hill and around the corner and down to Oakwood on the other side. We can't really do a lot in that far stretch by listening to fire hydrants, so, we don't even have main valves in that stretch to get on and do a lot of coalescing. And then, we can coalesce from one side of the hill to the other, but nineties and forty-fives and bends all change the velocity of how the water moves through the pipe, which is how these things treat leaks, so they will show a spike at a forty-five, 'cause that water's kind of turning and turbulent in, in that pipe, so you can get false readings on some of that stuff too, so, if they don't come, the best way is if they come to the surface, 'cause then we know, yeah, we got the air here, uh, if they don't come to the surface, it can be challenging for us to find them, especially when they're in the smaller, you know, I say fifty thousand gallons a day, that's, that's a lot of water, right? But in, in our realm, that's just a one-inch service somewhere, it could be busted and those are, can be difficult. those are, can be difficult to find.
Okay. Good question. Any other questions for Public Works Utilities? Okay, we'll move on, discussion, possible action regarding pay requests. Number eight from Duran Builders, haven't seen one in a couple months from then, and obviously, it's been reported, this, the work continues. They are currently requesting $191,142.50, it was included in your packet. Are there any questions?
Make a motion to approve that current pay request for $191,142.50. Sorry.
We have a motion and second to approve pay request number eight from Duran Builders for the Duran Community Pool. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Menke.
Yes.
Councilmember Wesenbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Westepel.
Yes.
Alls in favor.
Next. The council will convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statute 1985-1E for the delivering and negotiating-